.................................
Okay, we do have a change in the agenda tonight under new business number eight two. That's gonna be pulled and when we get to that, Jack's gonna talk to us about why we're gonna do that. So could we have a motion to amend the agenda? So move.
Second.
Ms. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Okay, and we have the approval of the minutes from the March ninth regular meeting. We have had a chance to take a look at these. Anybody have any questions? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Ms. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Physical business, Linda?
Uh, nothing to report tonight except I just wanted to remind the board that it will be three weeks between now and our next meeting. So you'll payroll and bills will be back on the same cycle and you'll probably see about a hundred bills in three weeks.
Okay. All right, very good. Uh, next item is current bills. We have had a chance to take a look at these. Anybody have any questions? Is there a motion to pay the bill? So move.
Second.
Ms. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And we have draft resolution forty-six seventy-eight, a resolution amending permanent appropriations with some supplementals. Anything particular?
I might suggest you put that with the purchase recommendation under the police district and wait to have that conversation along with that purchase recommendation.
All right, we'll move C down to the police district. Okay. All right, anything else from physical business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a public hearing scheduled, a public hearing to consider exhibit two thousand fourteen dash three, an amendment to the text of Clear Creek Township's zoning record resolution. This is resolution forty-six ninety-seven, a resolution to approve or deny fourteen, two thousand fourteen dash three amendment that refines the standards for chapter one for Clear Creek Township, One County, Ohio zoning code.
Mr. Wade, if I could, that's now gonna be forty-six seventy-eight, okay, just for the record.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Jeffrey?
All right, if you could close the meeting in a public hearing for me, sir.
Yeah, so a motion to recess this regular meeting, please. So move.
Second.
Ms. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, this is refining chapter twenty-one. Um, the essence of the text amendment is the board of zoning appeals made some recommendations for approval with a variance with conditions. And that was found not to be acceptable to common police court because it was not identified as a power that they had in the zoning resolution. So this text amendment fixes that issue, gives them the ability to apply conditions on variances, as they do conditions on conditional uses, and expansion of legal nonconformity. So it puts them back in line and in alignment with what the court has ordered us as an option.
Okay, anybody have any questions about, for two Jap, about forty-six seventy-eight? Carry on, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Ms. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And is there a motion to approve forty-six seventy-eight? So move.
Second.
Ms. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Okay, anything under unfinished business? Okay.
No, sir.
Okay, under new business, we have resolution forty-six eighty, a resolution authorizing the council administrator to renew the township liability insurance coverage with a karma and pay the premium cost.
The same, same plan you've had for several years. This is the renewal. The premium last year, um, was seventy-seven nine, seventy-seven thousand nine hundred. This year it's eighty-four thousand six hundred. The reason for that is, is we changed some, uh, coverage levels. We went through, there was some equipment changes and, and just kinda went through it with a fine-tooth comb. Unfortunately, I covered that where there was a few things we probably needed to add and make sure we're covered. I can detail that quite extensively.
We were underinsured in some of those areas, essentially.
I, there were some areas that I, that I think we had some, some underinsured aspect, yes.
And just as a point of order, that'll be drafted into resolution forty-six seventy-nine.
Okay, anybody have any questions about forty-six seventy-nine? Is there a motion to approve forty-six seventy-nine?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Ms. Mearsclaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And the next item under two, number two hundred administration is one that we have pulled from the agenda. Jack, you wanna tell us what's going on?
Um, Brian Pacheco, law, our law, law director, had a few changes he wanted to see to that, nothing major. But with the retreat earlier today and I was out the second half of Friday, I didn't get a chance to make those reflect those changes. So it's not an urgent matter, just if you can pull it, I'll redo it for the next meeting.
Okay, well, it's, it's off, so I don't think we need another motion for that. Okay, anything else under administration? Okay, police district, we have the purchase recommendation for the safety town robotic patrol cars. Robot, robot car.
Amendment.
Do the amendment, Richard, please. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's our call, that's, no, I, no, that's okay. We can do this, if we move the money, then it'd be there if we approve it. Okay, is there a motion to, no, we're gonna make this, will be forty-six.
Mr. Wade, if there's a chance that you might not approve it, we, we should throw away this resolution, so.
Well, I think we oughta, we oughta talk about this, we'll then approve the resolution, that's where I was heading. Okay. Okay, tell us, tell us about this, Chief, what is this thing?
Well, we want about designing the safety town program. There are certain, I, I sent police officers around to different safety towns, let them, uh, see how they're operating their agencies. Springboro sent one of their officers with us, that they've come on board with us now to do that. And I asked the officers that were in charge of that for me, what's your, what's your list of things that, that it's gonna make this a successful program? So we've gone to Loeb in the past and purchased majority of the items through their fund with the mats we bought, some of the cars that we bought, pedal cars for the kids to ride on. And it's supposed to be interactive, uh, educational experience for them, teaching about police, safety, fire, safety, nine-one-one, stranger danger, all the things we've talked about before. Uh, and, uh, this was on a back burner as far as a purchase because I knew it was gonna be an expensive item. Uh, the other agency, they went to use some kind of animated device, uh, to, as part of the educational process. They teach kids at the second grade student level, so, uh, keeping them interactive with things is helpful. Um, but looking at what we had funded at the time, I, I knew I'd have some Loeb funds coming in, but I figured it would take a couple of years to get there. Uh, we asked for some Loeb funds in October, we only get about twelve-five, like we got nineteen-five this year, so it was more than what I anticipated on, on using for expenditures. So I felt there was some money in there and I thought, well, maybe I'll set that aside and next year we'll look at trying to, uh, see if there's enough money in Loeb again to maybe purchase this item. Kinda dragging it out a little bit to see when I would be able to fund it without using public funds. Along the way, we have a, we have a court mandated education drug fund that's paid into by people that are convicted for OBI funds, uh, alcohol violations, drug violations. And those come in in varying amounts, I've got one today that's twenty-five dollars. And I've saved that up for eight years. I think we spent some money out of that one time. Uh, and it, like I said, it comes from the court for fines that are given to people for some of the crimes they've committed here. And that's earmarked specifically by state mandate that has to be used to, for some kind of educational purpose. So I anticipated at some point I would look at that fund also because there's not a lot arises to be able to use that. It's been building up and, uh, whether you find something of value to do that with.
So how much is in that fund?
There's about six thousand in that fund, but we were looking to take, I think, three thousand out of that and thirty-five hundred of the extra Loeb money, if you wanna call it extra, that they gave us this year. With the Rotary called, they were, I think, in Springboro, um, and I was talking to the staff down there and they referred them up here and the junk rotary had come in and granted us seven thousand dollars. That gave that a kick in the pants for me that, well, I have enough funds between, uh, the other two accounts and their donation to not use public funds to buy it. Knowing that that was a desire of my officers that wanted to use something to that effect in the school. And I thought, well, I'll see if we can go ahead and purchase it now. So I gave Rotary some idea of what their funds could be spent on with us, uh, so, you know, we do a few things, do a few things there. They liked this idea, I think, when they spoke, they talked to, uh, when they gave us the check, they talked about an animated thing that would, that they had some interest in on their money. Uh, they would like to have, uh, obviously some advertisement on there, uh, it's, it's some face time in front of the public. They're a good, a good organization, they do volunteer work, and they wanted to push that. They volunteered to help man some of the hours at Safety Town and they would like to be at the graduations, uh, there to help graduate the kids from the program when they're done each week.
What, what age level, you mentioned second grade, is it always?
This'll be students going to second grade. The, the school is changing up here. We were gonna look at first grade, but they're moving first graders back into town. Uh, so as they come into second grades, they're eligible second grade. There's about five hundred students, I think, that will be eligible. Uh, you know, there's, there's a time limit on having made in time to start the school, so that's the reason I brought it forward now, is for them to manufacture and, and avoid time issues, so.
And this is actually a, a patrol car or something?
It's an animated, uh, it's a, a robotic car. This company is, uh, they do police cars, they do fire trucks, they do, uh, cars for FedEx, for whoever wants to do some advertising. Uh, like I said, we, we spent, uh, some time with some of the PDs, they have it in their Safety Town program, raving about its effect with kids and the interaction they get with the kids with it. So it seemed like a valuable, uh, thing. Uh, I've been able to get the money without, living in the public funds to try to pay for it. So, uh, you know, I've got a timeframe to, you know, do it or not do it, in order to get paid in time to be here for open day. So I asked the board to let us purchase that, uh, and work with that education program.
I'm sure that this thing should last for a good period of time, as far as we know.
We talked about breakdowns of stuff and everybody's had good success with, uh, the device, so no, we're not getting issues like that.
And we'll be using this and not just the, the elementary education program, we'll be using this with the other programs.
We can use it in national night out. Uh, we, we frequently get asked to come to schools. Um, part of the group that asked us to produce a safety town, that met with Mr. Petrie and I at the school and, uh, the Springboro Police Department, uh, that asked, will you incorporate a safety town in your police department? Said, hey, we're already starting that. Uh, they want us to have some involvement in a program, they're dealing with children who are involved, SAC racism, police officers and so forth. So we use it a lot of other functions too. But, uh, the original purpose was to incorporate the educational efforts into that, into Safety Town, so that's what I'm asking.
Did you have a picture of that?
I don't have a picture of it, but I think, yeah.
We do have a video, if you wanna see what it looks like.
Just curious. Everything will wait back.
[mimicking a baby crying] Can I cheer for you? Can I borrow? Can you play along? What do you think? Here. Thank you. Hey, Diane. Come on over here for a second. Oh, you stay right there. Sit the whole night. Shut the door. You shut the door. Missed out. You want to be the best of that? Go ahead, Chris. Ready to fix it? Is that what you said? Oh, ready to fix your hole? You're the best one. Oh, ready to work the kiss? [laughing] It's so bad, yeah, that's why I'm so. My ass is gonna be lying. It's gonna be animated, it goes now, it's crazy. The door. Oh, yours!
Chief, come on in.
Hey, it's Aragoda. Aragoya? Aragoya? I'm lying, I'm doing it. I know I'm her dad, she told me to stay awake at night, wonder if this is gonna wait up. I mean, radio, radio. What a hard decision, I'm on.
That's true.
But our overall school dare to stay awake this year is Earth to Days and come on, man!
He stands behind us and gives me the resources to do my job. And for that, I wanna give him a huge round of applause.
Okay.
Is that the, the eye of it, or what, it would look like the one you, you gotta quote on?
Okay. All right. Well, it, it looks like a good thing, you know, you're using it for the kids and you got the money, uh, the right money. I appreciate that.
Okay, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
On Safety Town, I, I think this is fantastic opportunity for the kids. Um, how many, how much time is gonna be involved for the officers to, to do this through the summer?
So, two two-hour periods a day. Take, I think we've got about six weeks slated to do that. We'll fill in any full-time officers with part-time, so it's filled in cheap, but we're gonna be able to teach. Springboro's gonna assist with teaching, uh, then we'll, we'll get some other volunteer groups to help with that also.
So we'll have some.
Twice, twice a day, two hours of four-hour block. Uh, there'll be a, a five-day week for them. At the end of that week, they have a graduation from it, and whoever, to be there dignitary wise, could be their graduates.
Do you, do you have a estimate as to how much man, man hours or, or money that's gonna cost, just so we can say?
Four hours a day for six weeks. If I, I don't have the exact numbers off my head, no, but, uh, we would use some of our full-time officers with that teaching, uh, make sure it's consistent through the years and, and fill back in with the part-time.
And then someone, someone cover for them, if they were scheduled for it.
Yes, what are, what are the dates that it would run?
Eight for June, sorry.
Summer.
Yes, yes.
Right at the end of the school year, basically.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Any other question?
I, I, uh, are you saying now's the time we wanna vote on this, or is we have any discussion, or?
No, this is a discussion to see if we're gonna vote on it, or to vote on it, see if we approve the purchase and then we'll approve the, uh, officially approve the money for.
Just, can I make a clarification? Are you referring to public dollars? Any dollars that are brought in are public dollars. I'm just not sure what you mean by public dollars.
Yeah, it's not out of, it's not out of our regular, but.
It's still out of my regular budget, I mean, there's a seven thousand dollar combination from Rotary and.
I, I just wanna make a, a point, a point that.
Loeb, Loeb is a private foundation, it's honored out of the LCMB. They award funds to police and fire departments every year for, uh, property and community policing. It can't be used to buy guns, they don't want into that kind of business, but this is, they have funded the last three.
So the education is wrong, and you can use law funds on?
Correct, the education is wrong with them. I called and verified with them, it still fit within the program. Uh, and they have funded our mats for it, they have funded the, the pedal cars, they have funded the trailer.
Please, I'm not questioning, I just wanna make a point over that it is public funds.
And then the other fund is a drug and education fund, it's mandated by state law, uh, that it has to be collected and turned over to the police department by the court and that we have to spend it on education. And we just haven't had a good enough opportunity for me to wanna dip into that and spend it in the past. And I think this is one of those opportunities.
You know, we've had a difficulty with that fund, finding something to spend that money on. We've been talking about this for years.
Yes, yes.
I'm just curious, why aren't you spending, again, I'm not questioning you, I'm just, I'm just curious. Cause this is a discussion, John, you and I have been having it for six years. Why aren't you spending all that money on this since it's education? I'm just curious. And saving that other money for police purposes?
The split could be whatever we want, I guess.
Okay, I'm just curious.
If you wanna do it a different way. Uh, I was trying to, you know, the British here with the seven thousand for Rotary and this was what they had interest in.
Just knowing how difficult it is to find something to spend that money on, I'm just curious, that's all.
Now, we can still buy some, you know, uh, some of the, uh, any credit material and stuff out of that that might support the program, uh, once we get into that kind of stuff too. So I may still wanna keep somebody in there for that, uh, and as the program progresses, we might be there, but whatever's covered, I think. Approve or respond, it's fine, I mean.
Okay. Look, uh, again, I don't have a problem with, it's a long way to spend on that thing, but we've already got the town. This just enhances it and you've got it covered from the side of our normal taxes, not coming from the taxpayers, uh, like our other funds, just.
I, uh, I've, I've got a problem with this purchase of it. I, I've got no problem with Safety Town and the concept, but, you know, the, the Loeb grant, you know, somewhere along the line, you know, we, we gotta kinda say, are we sure we want to spend this much money? We, we spent fifteen thousand dollars on Safety Town and whatnot last year, so last year and this year, did we not?
Uh, I don't remember the exact number, sixty-five hundred for a mat, trailer, it's, it's up there, yeah.
Yeah, and thirty-two hundred dollars for the tent, thirty-one fifty for the tent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, tent, so it was around fifteen thousand dollars. So this, this gets us up to about twenty-nine thousand dollars and I'm just concerned, is there gonna be another fifteen thousand dollars next year? And, you know, the Loeb grant, you know, we can use on necessary police or, or fire EMS equipment. And, uh, you know, I, I read some background history of, of the Loeb grant and, and it's designed for, and whether they approved it last year or not, it's designed for purchasing equipment and tools for fire, police, that municipalities couldn't know, uh, couldn't get otherwise. And it's also set aside for elderly people to help them, uh, stay in their homes longer to avoid nursing care. And where I like Safety Town and, and the concept, I, I don't know that I would feel comfortable in saying, let's, let's take thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and, and buy a robot-controlled police car, uh, and all the accoutrements that, that go in here and feel good about that. Uh, you know, if we use Loeb funds last, last year and next year and all the years, those are just Loeb funds that we could've been spending on other things that maybe would be wiser, wiser purchases. Um, you know, the, the enforcement and education could've been used last year for the Safety Town stuff, but we're, you know, when we are using Loeb grant, in essence, we are using public funds in that they could've been used to purchase items that we have to take public funds to purchase. Correct? So, I guess, long, long, long way around the, the circle is, I like Safety Town, I like the idea of interacting with kids and public safety and all those things. I think we can teach a whole lot and interact with the kids without spending thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars on a, uh, robotic control car.
We know half the money's coming from Rotary. This is what they want. You've got sixty-five hundred in the other account that, that is by state mandate, state law. Why don't, why don't we move it? Are you comfortable with that? And, and pay it out of that fund? Does that make more sense to you?
Whatever split you want is fine with me.
I don't, I don't. Because someone says, hey, we'll spend seven thousand dollars on this, doesn't mean I wanna spend six thousand dollars on a robotic squirt gun.
I think that's demeaning what this is actually about, and with a second grader in the school system, I'd say that it's a little bit more than a, a robotic squirt gun, but that's my opinion.
I'll tie it to you. Okay. Uh, I do think it would be, uh, we can leave, I, I think we should leave the Loeb, Loeb fund money there, use it for something else. Pull all this money out of what you've been, trying to figure out a way to spend it over the years, as Linda indicated, and along with the Rotary's seven thousand dollars, gonna do it that way.
Mr. Wade, I just noticed something on the resolution. It said the amendment is to go from zero to three thousand. Are you sure there's sixty-five hundred in that? Cause he was gonna appropriate three.
Six thousand fifty-three eighty-seven in the enforcement and education fund, so there's not sixty-four twenty available.
I understand, you were only appropriating three thousand from that fund, on the resolution?
Um, thirty-five hundred from Loeb and three thousand from the enforcement and education fund.
Okay, good. Jackson, different administrator, Dennis would appropriate all of whatever was in that fund. I was just, I thought maybe there was only three thousand of the funds, so I just wanted to verify that it was six thousand, that's all.
Yeah, the, where Dennis would've taken all the money from the certificate and put it in the appropriation, unless it was a specific requested to be in that fund and available, I didn't move it from the certificate over.
I noticed that, so. I was just verifying that there was six thousand in that.
Yeah, there's, if, if you wanna do, there's six thousand fifty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents in the enforcement and education fund. So there's still.
We're still short.
Yeah.
Three hundred and seventy dollars, roughly.
Yeah. Okay. All right, then I, I would suggest, Jason, that if we change the item beyond here to six thousand dollars even, we should keep some, shouldn't we keep some money in that fund to keep it open? No, take it all out?
My, my whole thing is to close these funds out. That's why we've been talking.
But the problem is, is that's a mandated fund, it'll, it'll continue to get money year after year.
It'll, it'll be active, it just won't have any money.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if we take it all?
No, it's not like I close out the fund totally.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
All right, then let's take that six thousand fifty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents from that enforcement and education fund, along with seven thousand dollar donation from the Rotary Club and the balance from the Loeb fund. Tell me what those numbers are, Jack. Or I can figure them out.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I mean, there's no reason not to, unless you really, really don't wanna appropriate the other thirty-five hundred in the police fund, the money's there. It might be easier just to continue to appropriate the thirty-five hundred from Loeb into the police fund, knowing that there's three thousand that's gonna be left there for a while. If you don't wanna do that, we don't have to, I can just take the three off and appropriate it five hundred, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Doesn't matter.
Me either.
I, I'm fine if you leave it thirty, thirty-five hundred.
I thought we were having a, a, a hard time finding more to spend this money.
No, the education, enforcement education's hard to spend, Loeb's easy to spend.
Okay, what am I missing?
She's saying, do you wanna keep the thirty-five hundred coming out of Loeb and going into the appropriation, since we're not, we're only gonna spend four hundred of it.
It's just been appropriated, that's all.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Keep the other number the same.
I got you.
So we're gonna keep it thirty-five hundred?
I'm fine with that.
That's fine. And then, uh, and then, but we're gonna change the education, uh, enforcement and education fund.
Yeah, and it's like John said, he's got a check for twenty-five dollars, so that, that, that account's never going away.
Okay. So we're gonna change that mandate to six thousand fifty-three dollars eighty-seven cents?
Yes, sir.
And then the balances, well, and the seven thousand dollars that takes care of this expenditure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
But, before we get, did you amend it, amend the certificate so we can spend that seven thousand, is it appropriate?
I'm sorry.
The seven, seven thousand for?
No, the, until the certificate gets amended, it'll come out of four-thirty or where you would typically associate that money.
That money hasn't been, done anything with yet, it's not in the revenue budget yet, because it's, we don't have an amended certificate.
The, um, that seven thousand would come out of his four-thirty line, cause there's enough money in that fund.
So you'll appropriate it next time to four-thirty?
And when the certificate gets amended to include the seven thousand, we'll have to infuse that back in there.
Be another appropriation, yes, sir.
Well, or, or when we get the certificate amended.
Oh, have you, have you asked for it one yet?
We did the one after the, you know, first of the year balances went in.
Oh, I can ask for it if you want me to.
Yeah, we, we can talk about that, but that's. Yeah, we, we can talk about that, but that's, yeah. I think you need to change the number on the resolution.
I did. It's 46.70, no, 46.80 now.
Okay. So we're clear on where the money's going to come from and that if we have a motion that is approved, the money will be spent as indicated. Okay, so our motion to spend the money and using this changed to 46.80?
We're going to need two, we're going to need two motions, one on that this and then one on the car.
Oh, yeah, this one.
You can't do it all at once, I'm sorry.
Sure, of course. Okay, so our motion to approve 46.80 as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yay.
Mr. Wade?
Yay.
Mr. Mears Paul?
Nay.
Okay, and now we do need a motion to purchase the robotic car at a cost of $13,420.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yay.
Mr. Wade?
Nay.
Mr. Mears Paul?
Nay.
Okay, very good. Anything else from the police district at this time? No. Okay, and we have a fire district. We have a hiring process recommendation.
Actually, we've got two requests to initiate hiring processes to establish eligibility hiring lists. The first one is for captain position to get that going, to get the process started so that you can get a list established. We currently have a vacancy. Last time we attempted the process, we didn't get a sufficient application pool. So we'd like to tune that up again and see what kind of results we get this time. The second one is a career firefighter, paramedic process. Same thing, to establish a hiring list to hire off of should the need arise. We currently have two vacancies that we haven't replaced and we don't have an active list in place to hire off of right now. Looking to get started around the first part of April with this approved.
Okay. I suppose we should do these in two motions. Just like bringing that up. Okay, so our motion to approve the hiring process for a career firefighter captain, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Mears Paul?
Nay.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yay.
Mr. Wade?
Nay. And a motion to approve a hiring process for a career firefighter, paramedic.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yay.
Mr. Mears Paul?
Nay.
Mr. Wade?
Nay. Anything else? So any department?
Nothing else, so I guess you have some questions.
I have a resolution for the road department, resolution 46.81.
I'm going to make the adjustment on the actual.
Thank you, I did, I was going to say, we've got five.
Something slipped out, you got it?
Yeah.
It went from 82 to 81.
Resolution amending with revising the per county job description for seasonal partner position. Just clarifying that, I assume.
Apparently it hasn't been updated for a dozen or more years. And since we were putting it out, I guess Ron and Scott talked about it and decided we should touch it up and make sure it's reflective of what we need to be. The, as I sent you a note, the, the positions were advertised and we've got notices at the career center. The high school principal was going to put out a note to the seniors 18 and over kind of thing. So it's out there, the part-time position that we're, we're going to hire, look to hire for, and then the seasonal position.
Anybody have any questions about this resolution? Resolution 46.81. So motion to approve 46.81.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mears Paul?
Nay.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yay.
Mr. Wade?
Nay.
And we have purchase recommendations for two, for LED stop signs. Twenty, $2,550. And this release will be placed at the intersection of Township Line Road. I just think that's right, isn't it?
Yeah, Township Line 73. And Mr. Mears Paul had, has asked me a couple of times to communicate with ODOT about the ability to do some different signage. ODOT controls 73 and so they control that intersection. They were, were amenable to it eventually. But the arrangements are, if the township is willing to buy the signs, they will install them, maintain them. As long, you know, if there's some part or component that they have kind of in stock, but if something happens to some bigger component, we would be responsible to pay for something like that. So that's, they, they were amenable to it. So this is their vendor for the signs, 36 inch sign. And this is, this is their price for those. It's, the quote you have shows.
Even though we're going to pay for them, we have to, we're at the mercy of where the state buys their stuff.
Well, yeah, it has to be consistent with their products that they use because it's, it's their intersection and.
Their watch.
Yeah, we had to do it their way. It's probably a good price because they, they buy a bunch of them.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. I think these will help out there. You know, if we're getting a light here, thanks to the shaman, shaman, that's a great job. Or we couldn't get it done. And so that's awesome. And these will help out there. Never notice, you might get a light out there.
Yeah.
She thinks, she thinks next, she said I get one light a year. She said next year she may get a light out there.
Maybe anybody that drove past that double fatality last year would say, this, this is great.
Oh, yeah. I like these, I've seen them around and I like them. I'm with the police department, thanks for being sure.
I'm curious.
Show up.
The only thing you don't want to do is saturate it so much it just becomes commonplace. That's the fear is that. Now you start ignoring the flashing signs because you see them everywhere. So, you know, that is a long stretch of road and, and I've talked about this before. It's, you're traveling down through there and there's two brakes.
Right.
You kind of lose your attention a little bit to think on those long stretches like that. A lot of people use that road to escape the township, go home and so forth. So it does get some traffic. You know, we don't have a, a volume of traffic accidents there anymore. But they're always pretty severe when we do have them.
They're like airplane crashes.
Because the speed is, you know, you've got somebody 55 or 60 and somebody at five.
Right.
So the, the, the crashes are pretty tremendous when they do happen. So that would be my own caution, is that we don't, we don't make it so commonplace. It can be a hard, a good spot for it.
I was driving around over the weekend wondering, because I experienced this setup. You drive from here to Fort Wayne, Indiana. There are several in the rural areas up through there, especially, obviously at dark there. You can see them from miles away. But that, that got me in the thought process of this and for good reason. They, they have the same thing, people traveling without brakes and the, the impacts are huge when they happen. And rarely do you see one that's not either a fatality or a car flight in those areas. So I don't see any other areas necessarily on the horizon that this would. So to your concern, and it's a valid one, I don't know that I see that as an issue. I mean, other places, it's addressed with lights and things of that nature. I pray for a light at Overspring Road, Red Line 5, but that's just a.
How do you assess that?
That's a battle too.
I think it almost a dozen.
We, we witnessed one, right, two cars in front of us. Really, it could have been a lot worse.
But isn't that, is that the city or is that the township?
It's right there.
It's split.
Yeah, as everybody showed up.
And when Mr. Mears Paul brought it before, he brought up intersections as another spot. I'd like to see those flashes.
At, at the very least, more of our ground. So I'm going to bring up the Shannon.
I don't think Shannon can have one end of her house and another light at the other.
Well, you know, look, we, it won't look too, it won't look too obvious.
Can't be too obvious about it.
But it's another area that, when I think about areas of concern, I know, you know, Ridgeville is always one that, that, you know. Yeah, so those are all in my mind, things that we.
That's a huge help when they straighten that for a rest.
Exactly. Yeah.
People would stop and then blow right through that double stop.
So.
Before we do anything else, I wanted to compliment Jack because last year, I made several calls trying to get something going on. And Jack, through his connection or relationship with ODOT, it happened real quick. So we got communication back and it happened and good job.
Well done. Well, thanks. Well, I happen to know the guy, the right person to talk to coincidentally. I didn't know it was the right person until I asked him. But Steve followed up and I think did a sales job on him that really got him to change his mind. So I appreciate the accolades, but a team effort.
Let's approve it. Okay, is there a motion to approve this person, for these signs?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yay.
Mr. Mears Paul?
Nay.
Mr. Wade?
Nay.
Okay. Anything else under the road department? Okay, under staff updates, anything under staff updates? Do I have any questions or comments?
I have just a couple of things. One, and, I'm blanking on his first name. Mr. Schaefer called me about the Springbrough Area Historical Society.
Church.
Char, Charlie Schaefer. And he would like to address the board in regard to, before anything's done at Harbaugh Park, that there's some historical due diligence. I said, we just talked about that earlier. I don't see anything happening in the very near future, but send me a note and explain what you want to come in. So he will probably be here next meeting to give you his, please pay attention to historical significance.
They want you to go out and take their electronic.
That's not the way he represented it to me. So I said, please send me something so I can.
Is this the same person that talked to me?
Yeah.
No. But they're both part of that society.
Oh, it's not St. St. guy?
No, Tom, you're thinking of Tom Sproth.
No, 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 no.
I'm pretty sure it was the one, I, I called him because you gave me his number. And that's what he wants to come and.
Sproth's tied in with the historical society as well, so.
So.
There may be some traction with it there.
Expect to see that for the next meeting.
Okay.
As far as the stop sign at, at the engineers dinner, Neil Tuneson was talking about Old State Route 122 and Township Line. And they plan a roundabout for 2018 because that was Wayne Township's bigger concern. Because I reached out to them about our intersection. So they're planning a roundabout in a couple of years at Old State Route 122, yeah.
With all the semis that go down to there, I'm kind of surprised.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, all the farmer.
I guess it'll work, it'll be.
It'll be a big roundabout.
That's what I was saying.
But it makes people stop and not intersect, you know, so.
I would think it's going to take out a house or two, if I'm not mistaken.
At least, yeah.
At least the Gray's house on the northeast corner.
Yeah.
I think the Roy Hill are trying to get a planner around, you know?
And we have.
Well, that's an engineering problem.
You probably have noticed the traffic signal which is going out here at Bundle Hill. That should happen fairly quickly. They, they just poured the, the foundations last week and have set the poles today. As soon as they can get all the electric and stuff run, which is as quick as they can make it happen. It will be a, a string light. It won't have an arm, but it'll be strung up. It'll have, he was explaining it as a radar detector. You know, you have loop detectors that are in the ground and then they evolve to video detectors that can be on top of a, a light. This has a radar one, which is even more sensitive and, and accurate for the, to sense the traffic. And so it'll have timings and so forth. But that, that'll be, that probably won't be operational for a couple of months. It usually let it flash for a little while.
Good, it's, good to know people in high places, you know. When, when we widened that out there, remember that, we offered to paint for the light ourselves. Turn this down, flat. So like you say, it's nice to know people up there that can hear the squealing of the tires from our house. Doesn't like the weight of yourself.
I asked if I could have a little remote control for when I come and go, but.
They didn't go for that, did they?
Uh, deferred. And one, one other thing, the, we presented the aggregation topic to those folks at the engineers dinner. Jason and Steve were there in support of that and I thought it went well. I only got feedback from one person. Well, I only talked to one person who, who gave me feedback. They thought, at least Wayne Township folks thought they, they heard the message and understood it. And they're going to talk about the possibility of pursuing that. I don't know if anybody else has gotten feedback. But I, I think it went well and we'll see if others decide they want to join in.
Okay, good. Anything else, anybody have anything else? There is nothing, just our motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Mears Paul?
Nay.
Mr. Gabbard?
Nay.
Mr. Wade?
Nay.